To do that as well. Public comments is for the public to speak for a maximum of three minutes. On a subject within the jurisdiction of the Monterey City Council and not on the agenda. And as always, you can either leave your contact now or do your contact off online off offline with our staff. And you can reach us at suggest at Monterey dot org and you will always get a reply from our wonderful staff. So with that, public comments not on the agenda. Anyone in the city council chambers now?
Items not on the agenda?
Yes.
Let's see, I do not believe so. And I think Ryan, if it is regarding the letter, we'll have your public comment before closed session since it's on the itemized, it's on the agenda. At the, at the end before closed session, we would like to hear from you. Yeah, we'll hear from you. Thanks. It's, it's a, it'll be open in terms of yes, public comment for public feedback open. But it is agendized as a closed session item. So we would hear the public comment. At before council goes into closed session. If that makes sense, and I can always get clarification from city clerk or city attorney, but that's my understanding. Because we have under closed session.
Yes, public comment before we adjourn to closed session.
Before we adjourn to closed session.
Yes, on that, on any of those closed session items.
So item, item number two for closed session. I, I, my understanding was city clerk's office communicated. With you on this one, Ryan, but I'll go over and chat with you in a minute. Okay. Any, yes.
Man, just might help my clarify. There are two open. A comment periods. One is now for items not on the agenda. And then under items that are covered under our closed session. Agenda, then just before we go to that, then it's the second open. And it's on topics that are coming up on the closed session items. So this is for anything else that's not on the agenda. And then later there is the request for any comments on the closed session item. We'll invite you up to make comment. That's why it's a little bit confusing, but we follow the brown act. This session is for items not on the.
Thank you for clarifying, Vice Mayor Smith.
All right.
And items that are not on the agenda, either the regular meeting or the closed session. We do not have any, I believe. So here in the council chambers.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, yes. You were next Clementine. Thank you for being so on the ball. Let's so please would you. And enable the people who would like to speak, please virtually to go ahead and participate. It's all yours.
Yes, we do have a couple of people. So first I will let a phone caller with the last three digits nine zero two, please go ahead.
Good evening or good afternoon. My name is Nina Beatty. I was down at the post office last week. And in fact, I parked my car and was looking up Cass Street. And there was a large bird that was attempting to walk across the road. And a driver hit the bird and then drove off. I've noticed. Driving that is unsafe in the vicinity of the post office. I then went into the post office. And the employee informed me that three post office employees have been hit. In front of the post office and that they have regular accidents. Sometimes every other week or so. So there's a real traffic problem. In front of the post office and in the streets surrounding there. This needs to be corrected before the city is, there's some problem about this. Also, the birds that are, we live in a city of lakes. And there's no signage that indicates that there's wildlife crossing. And that needs to be addressed too, because I watched birds almost be hit, geese and ducks. And that needs to be fixed before there are, you know, this is just a cruelty to animals sort of issue. So people need to drive more carefully across the bridges on Lake Elastero. So I hope that the city can address these traffic problems that are, that could help hurt pedestrians, human pedestrians as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Esther Malkin. Where did she go? Esther, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to share a text that I got from a local doctor. About one of his patients. It reads, one of my patients is being evicted after being in the same house for forty seven years. The son took over when the father died and the rent went from thirteen hundred to thirty six hundred. She is moving into an above garage room for rent and she has bad hips. That room required her to put down five thousand dollars. To move into the room above the garage. This might sound like something you've never heard before, but I will tell you that this month alone, I have had three cases. All senior women have the same exact experience that are being displaced after decades of being in places that they've lived. So those of you that say you don't hear about cases that are problematic with renters, I want to make sure you understand that that is going on. Secondly, I want to bring up that the last meeting. Councilmember Ed Smith called the project on Adams Street that was going to be a hundred percent affordable. A corruption that he would not vote for it because projects like these corrupt our neighborhoods. And you need to think about that. When you flaunt that you guys have rezoned the area because you rezoned it, but you're not allowing the very projects that you resounded for to be created. That would offer a hundred percent affordable. And lastly, I would bring to your attention while those of you that are going to be attending. The hoity-toity wealthy fancy car week events that you so love to be involved in and that charities. Benefit so much from, that you should picture what would happen to that event. If everybody who works those events, serving those wealthy people. Whether in hospitality, retail or otherwise, including city staff that are not executives. If they walked off their jobs this week, how would that event look? Would it be so successful and wonderful and fabulous? Probably not. But the majority of the people that are working this event cannot afford to live here. Some of them are now being imported from out of the area to work it. Others are commuting farther and farther in. And you guys really are not being representative of the people that are the majority of the residents of this city. So I strongly recommend that while you guys are attending these events, that you take a moment and look around and appreciate. That the people that are serving you are barely getting by paycheck to paycheck because of housing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do not see any further hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then I will close the. Public comment part of our agenda and we'll go right into consent. Did we have anyone that we know of who wanted to, from the public who wanted to pull a consent item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and city council, anything you'd like to pull or make comments on?
Yes, I have two, two items.
All right, council member Dan, go ahead, please. Did you want to report or just a comment?
No, I just have a comment.
Okay, please.
On number one, there's a correction. It, it states that I was virtual, but I was actually in person. That's minor change.
Yes.
And the second one is number eight. Received the mid-year update on two thousand twenty-two city staff work program. Want to thank the staff for. Hard work they put in in two thousand twenty-two for all the workers for. For getting us to a point where we progressed on this work program. Thank you very much for doing that.
Yes, those are great comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Ed, please.
Item number six, I'd like a presentation. Negotiations on leasing to Tesla for the Marina parking lot.
In that case, we will pull that from the consent and look at it individually. Tyler or Alan, anything?
I just have a question on thirteen for staff. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I say thirteen?
Yeah, you did.
Three.
Hey, man, don't make our agenda any longer than it is. Yeah, please go ahead, Councilmember Tyler.
Yes, I'm just wondering if I understand correctly, when we had authorized the distribution of the funds for the CDBG. That those were all allocated and am I misunderstanding that? And are funds being pulled from somewhere else to, to. Meet the delta that's needed for the project.
All right, well. Will our wise, wise city manager be able to answer that for us, please?
Yes, I have the even wiser Grant Leonard responding to that, please.
But who's the wisest?
The mayor, always.
Thank you. Oh, and we did not prearrange that, you guys.
But keep in mind, it's an elective position.
Right. Okay, all right. Well, let's go ahead to the wiser Grant then, if he's ready to respond to that.
Yes, excellent question. All the funds in April, when we approved the action plan, were approved and allocated. Although, as we know, the city development block grant program ebbs and flows in terms of its revenue and its program income. And since April, we've had sufficient program income to. Up with the funds requested by CHS, which is why we're able to bring this up forward tonight.
And just a quick follow up while we have you there, Grant. Where, where did the city make that revenue from? Was that based off of the? The low income. Homeownership program that we have?
That's right. It was a combination of our revenue sources, our program income, including repayment of loans. A sale of an inclusionary housing unit and also revenues from our ground.
Okay, and how much, how much is left after this distribution of funds?
You know, we're in good position to cover our action plan for the year going forward, but we don't have significant surplus after this.
Is there not a dollar amount?
Not off the top of my head. It's something I certainly get back to you with, though.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all set, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Good question. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent minus number six.
Move to approve.
All right, roll call. Oh, sorry. Any public comment on the consent? In the chambers? Or online?
We have one comment on consent.
Okay, nothing online. I understand. All right, let's go ahead, please, to the chambers then on the consent agenda, please.
Okay, good afternoon. I'm Eloise Jim, and I wanted to comment on the. The CCBG grant for the. Youth. That Grant just talked about. Hundred and sixty thousand dollars and. As per the judge, the budget, very little is allocated. For the homeless, the very low affordable housing. Uh, people, and I think that a hundred and sixty. For the youth homeless shelter. An increase of that. I don't know what, what else, what other money is, is allotted for that. But I think it's biased towards the youth against the homeless adults. Many of those youth have been from perfectly good homes, but homes that have been. Punished for being poor by having their children taken from them instead of giving enough money to them. To their parents' homes. So. I think more money should be allocated fairly to. Homeless and very low income people by the city. And not so much to the youth shelter. Without reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Eloise.
And no other public comment on consent items.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Um, yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoppa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Mayor Roberson?
Yes, I think I might have made a mistake on the one. Add the one that you wanted to pull. I think I said item six. I didn't, yeah, that's the right one.
That's correct, item six.
Okay, yes. All right. So anyway, yes, on the consent, if I didn't vote yet. And so. Item six, let's have a brief presentation by our staff and then we'll have. Councilmember Ed, go ahead and take the lead on that. So back to our city manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, allow me to, to try to do this brief presentation. This agenda report gets us basically in the closed session. As the agenda, the points is negotiator, our property manager, Jenna Aldredi. And as the council is aware, we originally started negotiating and looking at options to put. Tesla chargers or EV chargers into the downtown east garage. This, this particular location. Prop has some challenges for, for, for correct installation. This negotiation now will bring us into an area in the waterfront parking lot. Which is basically at the landscape area at the corner of Washington Street and Del Monte. And there is a request by Tesla to provide space for fourteen. Parkings for fourteen chargers that are Tesla chargers and all likelihood also chargers for other vehicles. It will consume about seventeen parking spaces because the. EV chargers for ADA parking spaces will require some more spacing than a normal parking space. So this is the open agenda report that gets us into the closed session where the city council will hear. A few more items for possibly negotiations with Tesla for that side.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ed, to you, please.
Yeah, if I could ask the, the staff or, or the city manager in respective to the seventeen. Parking spaces. If we, we go back to the original design of the master, master lot renewal. Where are we on the total parking spaces? From the time where we finished landscaping and re-topping the Marina lot. What have we lost prior? And if we look at this potential set aside for the seventeen for a Tesla. Row of cars, what would that bring us to for a total of lost inventory for parking?
And I, I apologize. I don't have the number already what we lost prior to that. And I, I will find that number and share that with you at closed session, definitely. We, we have in the front a little over four hundred in the metered. Parking area waterfront parking lot in the gated lot, as we call it. We have a little over four hundred spaces available right now. If you add to that the adjacent spaces that are in front of the Harbor Masters office, London Bridge Club. A dust bowl as well as the. Former Adventures by the Sea building there. We have another, we have a total of around a thousand, a little over a thousand parking spaces. Available for the waterfront.
Okay, and last question relative to the inventory count. Do we have a number of what we know are Tesla stations? And on top of that, regular recharge stations that are all of the other brand automobiles that. Don't, I can't hook up Tesla. So I recognize that there's different. Charge charging. So I'm wondering about the inventory across the downtown area of charging stations.
Yeah, so, so, so we have zero Tesla charging stations on city-owned parking operations. So that's zero. We have four EV charging stations in the east and west garage. And that's all what, what currently our parking inventory is offering.
And I believe you said four, is that correct?
Four, yeah, and they are actually not Tesla charging, but EV charging. And Tesla is, is the, the highest selling. Electric car right now.
Okay, and those four that we have in the. West garage and the underground garage off of Cali P, they don't accommodate Tesla?
And to the best of my knowledge, no, they do not accommodate them.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's the only questions I had at this time. I look forward to the closed session item.
Yes, any other council questions, comments before we go to the public? All right, any public comment on this? And this basically the action is to. Appoint negotiators to work with Tesla on possible leasing. And so the questions that Councilmember Ed brought up, I'm sure will be discussed in closed and open session later. Any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment in chambers.
All right, welcome.
Hello.
Hi. Yeah, push the button on the bottom of the base there. Try, push the button. Go green. There you go. You got it.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is John Lord. I represent Tesla. And we're very excited to be here and being considered for this opportunity. So thank you to members of the city council, city manager, and Mayor Roberson for considering this proposal. To install EV charging infrastructure with the city. Tesla's core mission is to accelerate the world's transition to sustainable energy. While EV charging is only one facet of this really big monumental task. It is crucial to enable EV accessibility and growth at scale for everybody. Our proposal to install superchargers at the waterfront lot. Will support the city, county, and state goals necessary to achieve a carbon-free economy by as soon as possible. Tesla superchargers will also have a positive economic impact on the adjacent businesses. By bringing in new travelers from all over California, while also supporting the local community of EV owners. Earlier this year, Tesla installed one of the world's largest utility-scale battery storage projects right here in Monterey County at the Montes. Tesla Supercharger Station at Monterey's waterfront is one of many examples of Tesla's continued investment in sustainable infrastructure within this region. As we further push to accelerate the advent of sustainable energy and transportation. So I wanted to say thank you again to all members of the city of Monterey for your consideration of this project. We're excited to. Forward to a long and prosperous supercharger station for the benefit of all Monterey citizens. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments.
And no other public comment on this item.
Clementine, anyone online?
Yes, first let's hear from Esther Malkin.
Hello again. So just to make a point, the cost of a Tesla is more than. What I paid for my home in, in Miami thirty years ago. And right now, it's probably what it might be for a quarter of a down payment in a house in Monterey. So when Tesla says that this is going to be a benefit for all people in Monterey, disingenuous at best. They took over a whole section of the parking lot in the Del Monte Mall where the farmer's market is. And all of those spaces are now not available to locals that cannot afford to drive a Tesla. The fact that Tesla is positioning itself as such a hero for the carbon footprint, footprint being reduced. Is pretty comical when you're talking about a city that has sixty-six percent renters as its residents. And the majority of them can't barely afford their rent, let alone an electric vehicle like that. If this was a real attempt to help the environment. Less expensive vehicles would be able to charge their vehicles. And more of those chargers would be considered instead of the elitist Tesla ones. That if they really want to charge their vehicles while they're shopping, they can park at Del Monte Mall and take a bus or a shuttle over to the rest of. On the area, if that's where they're going to be. But, you know, this is just another example, especially given that Car Week is here. Why this city continues to become more and more elitist. And the haves and the have-nots are, are very, very blatant. And there's nobody that's willing to really talk about that. While they're all busy, you know, running around in their Teslas. And the city council won't approve, you know, affordable housing where we could possibly have it. So for the optics of it, this is kind of comical. It's nice that Tesla donated their vehicles to the city of Seaside's police department. If they really want to be, you know, part of the, the city's. Issues with anything regarding EV vehicles, let them do the same to our city that they did in Seaside. It's just not, it's just not okay to focus and give up space only to Tesla. Versus the other electric vehicles that maybe are more affordable. Not to mention that even with rebates and all the credits available, electric vehicles and e-bikes are not affordable to most people who are renters here. So keep that in mind when you're giving up space for this on public property. And denying, you know, projects that are a hundred percent affordable.
All right, thank you. And next we have a telephone caller with the last three digits five zero zero.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. This is Wendy Brickman, president of Fisherman's Wharf Association, and I'm calling to share our thoughts. About the proposed planned use of seventeen parking spaces for the electric. Vehicle charging stations in the waterfront lot. I believe we've sent some letters to the city council. And although we're in support of your wish to protect the environment and expand your network of EV charging stations. We do not agree with your staff's findings for the proposed location in the waterfront lot. We feel that you should look for alternative locations. The waterfront parking lot has already lost a number of spaces in recent years due to the lot's reconfiguration. And the placement of the compactor building. And there is an increasing demand for parking with all the newer uses of the parking lots, such as the Monterey Magic and Comedy Theater. More craft fairs in the custom house parking lot, excuse me. Increased number of craft fairs in the Custom House Plaza, Craft House Restaurant, which will reopen soon. Ultimately, the replacement for the former scale seafood and steak. Not to forget our dedicated fans of watching the California Sea Lions at the head of the wharf. Right now. We really do not feel that you need to rush to implement this plan as there are no state or federal regulations. That require immediate insulation. And we would urge you to carefully take the time to plan for a location that is in an area that is less intrusive. And more aesthetically pleasing. Thank you.
And there are no further hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I want to, I like to deliberately answer the Councilmember Smith's question because I was able to find that out.
Okay.
That's okay. So Councilmember Ed asked, how many spaces did we have before we. Reconfigured the waterfront parking lot, which is again the gated lot that, that you see directly adjacent to. The wharf number one as well as the Dali Museum. We had originally four hundred seventy-nine parking spaces there. After the reconfiguration, we lost thirty spaces. We have now four hundred forty-nine spaces there.
All right, thank you for that, that, that wise clarification. And so.
May I ask, may I ask a follow up with Hans?
Yes, please, Councilmember Ed.
I thank you, Hans, for that quick answer. As always, you are a superstar. Did we lose any parking spaces that were accommodating the new trash facility? So does, is that part of the thirty we lost or is there another number that we lost?
No, we, we lost definitely another five or six parking spaces when we built the compactor room there as well. Yes.
Okay, great. So it looks like the net result is somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five down from the original old count.
Yes, and, and I just need to give kudos to our staff who is providing me this information in record time. So.
Yeah, that's good.
My, my much appreciation to all of the staff that has the numbers that gave it to you. So thank you, staff.
All right, that, with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve item six. And under discussion, I recently, the CCL Citizens Climate Lobby. I don't know, you're, you're all probably familiar with that. They originally were established to look at. A carbon tax, and you may have read about that. But anyway, at their last monthly meeting, they had invited Land Watch, which has done. A climate action study for the city of Monterey. And one of the essences of that was charging stations, not only in parking lots, but in parking garages. not only in parking lots, but in parking garages, on streets, in apartments, everywhere. Because the whole point is we have to get off fossil fuels. I won't get into sharing with you the United Nations' two reports because I don't want to scare you for the rest of the evening. But it's really time for us to get very, very serious about this and getting off fossil fuels. And I think obviously Tesla is the leader, but there are going to be more and more EVs coming forward. And so I'm looking forward to charging stations that can serve all vehicles, not just necessarily Tesla. And so I feel that we're going to go into negotiations and a lot of this can be worked out. And if there's problems and we don't like it, we won't do it. Again, the whole point of this item is to get into negotiations. Other discussion?
So Mayor, for clarification?
Yes, please.
I want to make sure that the public understands that we're just appointing negotiators. We're not approving the project. Just want to make sure people know that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, please, Councilmember Ed.
I kind of have a track record where I write out the beginning, say yes or no, and know if I don't think it's viable and if I want to study a little bit more. But I'm going to vote no on this because I don't think it's the right location. I encourage that we have a potential for more charging stations. But I know that parking lot from high-end, high-use. I think there's probably another, a better alternative. And I would rather see more general charging stations rather than a specialized for Tesla at that location. So I just want to be congruent with, rather than saying, yes, let's go negotiate. I don't think I even want to negotiate for that site, so I'm going to say no.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I'm definitely interested in exploring this. As Dan said, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to approve it, but to not negotiate makes absolutely no sense in my view. In case folks haven't noticed, we're in the midst of a climate crisis. And the Wharf in particular is going to be vulnerable to the effects of climate change and ocean level rise. A lot of people visit there. If we want to encourage people to transition to EV, you have to put the charging stations where people are driving and parking. So it, you know, it makes sense. Now, I do agree with you. It would be great to have charging stations that would work for all EVs. And that's something we can pursue in negotiations. But I don't understand why you wouldn't want them there. And I think, what is it, seventeen out of a thousand? Help me out with the math. Is that one point seven percent of the total lots there? I believe so. So I don't see how that would be a negative in any way for anyone if we do decide to go forward with this.
So Mayor, that brings up another question that I have.
Yes, Councilmember Dan.
If we agree with the negotiations, does that necessarily mean that we're only talking about the corner waterfront parking lot? Or can we go into negotiations for another spot on, near the waterfront? Are we locked in for negotiations just for this spot?
For this closed session, we would be limited to this location. Doesn't preclude a different agenda, as in the future, I don't think we'd have to ask our property negotiator if other locations were to be considered, but those couldn't be discussed in closed session today.
So if we don't agree in closed session on the spot, we can bring it back for another spot if we, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, if both parties agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then let's go ahead to, we have a motion and a second to proceed. So with good questions and good guidance. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No on this one right now.
And Mayor Robertson?
Yes, passes four to one. And we've ended our consent agenda. Let's go into our first and only public hearing, and that's the first reading of an ordinance to rezone one thirty-six Herman Drive to have a historic overlay and authorize a Mills Act contract. Now, because it's a zoning issue that has gone to HBC, Planning Commission, and to the city council, which for two readings. And normally, it's very routine, but I think it's well worth taking just a moment to ask our staff, our world-class city manager, to introduce his staff to just share, not all the technicalities, but just share the uniqueness and the wonderful house that we're looking at. So if we could do that, let's take a look at the house and how, why it qualifies for being historic without getting too far into the weeds, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our principal plan of an under robbery will present that. And as you indicated, there's always something you can learn when we go through the H2 zoning and Mills Act process. And it always shows the rich history that our city has and also shows the respect that we have for maintaining those assets still in our city. So with that, please go ahead.
Thank you, Hans. So an architectural historian, Mr. Kent Seavey, prepared the historic survey for this property and found that this property qualifies as a city historic resource based on its architecture and the subdivision. So this subdivision is called the Monteregio subdivision, track number one. And it is the most extensive residential housing development in Monterey between nineteen twenty-six and nineteen fifty. And so this resource is associated with this very large subdivision. And this is why it's significant in this regard. It is also significant for its architecture as a very good and essentially intact example of the earliest housing development in this subdivision. The architecture is called by Mr. Kent Seavey as a cross-gabled vernacular cottage. And it retains all aspects of historic integrity, including location, feeling, craftsmanship, et cetera. And it meets the eligibility requirements for the historic zoning and the Mills Act contract because of the aforementioned significant the location and the architecture. And the property owner submitted the required information for a Mills Act contract, including a maintenance schedule for the property for the life of the contract and the legal description of the property. And so this is what the house looks like. Like I said, it's a vernacular cottage, one-story, resting on a concrete foundation. It has rough-cut caramel stone exterior wall cladding, a low-pitched cross-gabled roof, and a partial with raised, covered open porch with closed caramel stone rail. It also has some original steel casement windows, including an arched focal window in the east-facing gable bay, as you can see in the photo. And so the staff recommendation is that the city council approve first reading to rezon the property as a city historic resource and authorize the Mills Act contract.
That concludes our presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Fernando. We haven't seen you in a while, and nice to see you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
All right. So did we have the owner or anyone associated with the property who wanted to speak to us in the council chambers or online?
Yes, here in the council chambers, we do, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Lorraine Kimsey, and I'm the new owner of one three-six Herman Drive. I purchased the house in December of twenty twenty-one from a family who had owned it since nineteen thirty-eight. Fortunately, had not altered the exterior during that time. It was built of caramel stone in nineteen thirty-one after the Jacks family subdivided their property to create the Monterregio neighborhood. A copy of the original nineteen thirty title is included in your packet along with my proposed twenty-five-year maintenance schedule. The packet also contains a photo of a Mills Act property, the John M. Thompson House at Monroe and Jefferson Street, which bears many similarities to my home. As an indication of my commitment to historic preservation, I've included a picture of the Mills Act home in which my late husband and I resided for thirteen years, the Norman Davis House. During that time, we not only passed each inspection by the various Monterey City Commissions, but exceeded the maintenance schedule. I ask you therefore to once again provide me the opportunity to support the goals of the Mills Act by approving my application for one thirty-six Herman Drive. Thank you for your guidance and your support during this process. If there are any questions that I could answer, I'd be happy to respond.
All right, thank you. And being a neighbor, I'm really enjoying the beautiful house and what you're doing with it. Thank you so much, Rainey.
And Mr. Mayor? Public comments here in chambers?
Online?
Oh, sorry. Oh. Yes, I have one. All right, we have Esther Malkin.
Again, I'm just curious if this is going to apply just to that property or if it's going to spread out to the adjacent areas? Because it is a well-known tactic in other cities to designate areas as historic to keep out multi-unit housing to be built in certain neighborhoods. So again, no disrespect to the owners of the property. It's beautiful, and I'm sure they'll keep it beautiful, and it is historic. But is this, I just want clarification on whether it's just that one property or a whole block or everything within that block that might be similar, or what the effects are going to be long-term when it comes to that designation. Thanks.
No further comments on Zoom, Mr. Mayor?
All right. My understanding that the Mills Act applies to an individual property, not a region. If the staff wants to clarify that, the process, please do.
That's correct. This applies just to this property.
Right, so anyone else in the environs would have to go through HPC and Planning Commission, city council, each individual property as we go along. Interestingly enough, when I read that, it were the nineteen twenty-six to nineteen fifty, then where I live, which is called Monterregio sometimes. Many of these tract homes were built in the mid-fifties, fifty-four to fifty-eight. And so I'll be in for a Mills Act here pretty soon. No, I'm kidding. All right, are we ready to move on this?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Right. So growing up two doors down from this house.
Yeah.
I've always admired this house, and especially the caramel stone siding. And I'm very happy to see that that siding will be preserved because I haven't seen a house like that in the Monterregio area. So to have a house unique as this one, I'm very glad to see that it will be preserved.
Thank you, Councilmember Dan.
Mayor, a quick comment?
Yes, please, Councilmember Ed.
So I think the only similar house that I've ever seen in this neighborhood is the Monterey jail. And I'm not saying that your house looks anything like that. Your house is beautiful with a great historic value that fortunately is unchanged and is a beautiful place to start. So congratulations on that find. And for your history and your preservation and your dedication with you and Mike to the historical significance of this home and our city. So this can't be done without individual efforts. And I much appreciate the fact that there is a process to preserve individual homes that qualify and that have the love and care of the owners that are going to take care of it. So appreciate your home that does not look like a jail, but has some beautiful beautiful connections to all of Monterey and the caramel sandstone look. It's beautiful look. And I love the fact that they've got the rough cut windows and obviously a classic Monterey craftsman. So congratulations and thank you.
And I would say the owner's former home on Cedar Street was hosted several gent train events. And I can remember Councilmember Allen, who chairs gent train, giving us a little Shakespeare from upstairs to all the gathered folks. And I had an opportunity to go through the home with Ms. Kimsey, and absolutely beautiful. And I know she'll take the same care for this new one.
Yeah, I'll just add that Ms. Kimsey has been very generous with sharing her other, you know, prior historic home. Not only with gent train, but she also hosted a party, kind of a team-building party for the city council and their wives and/or partners back in, I want to say, two thousand and fourteen. So I think that's a nice thing to be able to share your historic home with the community.
Thank you, Alan. I don't think there's a motion, so I'll make it to pass the first reading.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson?
Yes, that passes five zero. That's one of the happy things we get to do as a council. And so let's go to council comments. Let's find out if some of what our council members have been doing on their various boards and commissions and other jurisdictions outside of the city. So Councilmember Tyler, would you like to start us this evening?
If you could come back to me, Mayor, I'm going to try to get my notes in order here.
All right. Councilmember Allen, anything this evening?
No report tonight, thank you.
All right, and Councilmember Dan?
We are all on break. Most of, all are bored, so I have nothing.
Very good. Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, pretty much the same with the exception of Ambag board meeting last week and also the executive meeting that precedes that. So I'll just report that Ambag heard an appeal on the Rena numbers from two cities at that meeting last week. And the report back on the finance committee is that the board has received a report that financially very strong with adequate reserves and doing well. One additional comment, since it's come to council, I'm not going to go into a lot of details, but since somebody mentioned my name reporting a past meeting, I'll just refer to the citizens if they're interested to see the full statement and the full comments by all of the city council members. And certainly, we have disagreements from time to time, but I want to make sure. So I would invite anybody that wants to go to view my entire comments that were made on the matter of a six-story building that was proposed at four forty-two Adams Street. So I'll leave the record to stand there for read in here as they choose to. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Last night, I am the mayor's representative on the water management, water management district board, water board. And so really important action that I have shared with you before, and that is the board voted unanimously to look at Montage and Chomp as one entity with respect to water, because there are two main campuses, obviously Chomp up on Holman Highway and then Ryan Ranch. And so Chomp is basically built out and has water credits. And because of the action of the water board last night, those water credits will be able to be used on the Ryan's Ranch property. So in other words, the entire Montage complex was considered as one entity rather than two spread out. The Water Management District has done that for the Department of Defense and had historically and also historically had done that for the school districts. Whereas water is being able to be transferred between sites because, in essence, it's it's one purpose, it's really one entity. And so that I thought was important. I supported that, and I made the motion because that will enable Chomp to do some, two very important expansion projects on its Ryan Ranch campus. And secondly, the saga of public acquisition, as you know, continues. And the board approved a budget item to update the appraisals on the Calan property because as these things drag out, uh, the Water Board went in front of Ambag and did not get approval for the acquisition at this point. And then so when appraisals go forward, they get stale, so to speak. So the board approved to update the evaluations going forward because as it was pointed out, which I thought was a really good um, a public comment, there are risks involved, but it was pointed out that the voters said, Water Board, you will proceed with this. And so until it's proved unfeasible or the voters say you will not proceed with it, the Water Board in essence has to follow the mandate of Measure J. So that's what we did last night. All right, Councilmember Tyler, I blathered on so you could gather your notes together.
I appreciate that, Mayor. And my notes are are uh, good for today. So I'm I'm actually will pass for today.
Oh, all right. Threw me a curveball there, huh?
I wanted you to be able to end it. You did so well in your presentation.
Thank you. You're very kind. All right. So before we adjourn to closed session, as Councilmember Ed had explained earlier, we will open a public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I have a brief chance to just.
Oh, I'm sorry. City manager reports. I was so anxious.
Let's blame it all on Tyler.
Oh, yeah, I know. He he what's, he flummoxed me after such a word.
I I uh, I have actually two items I just would like to to share. Uh, the number one item uh, that that I I uh, feel uh obliged to to inform the public is we will hold our third public meeting about the wireless ordinance uh, after we restarted the the talks about this. So that's the third meeting now on September thirteen in front of the planning commission. We we held two previous meetings. So third public meeting will be on September thirteen about the wireless ordinance. And uh, just a a quick update that um, all our firefighters uh, are home with the exception of one uh, uh, paramedic captain uh, who we sent out this morning again to a fire uh, in Northern California, that the Six River Complex Fire. So um, we were at one time up to, I believe, eleven firefighters out fighting McKinney Fire and other fires uh, now one uh, line EMT uh, out uh, on a, on the Six River Fires. So that's it.
Uh, thank you for those two updates. And sorry, I didn't mean to skip over you. And now, if we have uh, comments on the closed session items, this is we'll open up public comment on anything on the closed session items. Obviously uh, council won't discuss them, but was all ears and wants to hear uh, your input. So getting back to our worthy assistant city manager, Nat, that there was someone in the chambers, I believe, who wanted to talk to us.
Yes, we do. We have a few and uh
Okay.
Uh, start now.
One more time.
Yeah, at the base. Yeah, there you go.
Hello.
Yep, we got you now.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Ryan Tarran. I'm the Labor Relations Representative for Launa Local seven ninety-two and representative for the general employees of Monterey. On behalf of the general employees of Monterey, we're addressing you today in order to ask you to consider increasing your offer and contract negotiations with our group. As you know, about a month ago, we declared impasse in negotiations with the city after our members voted overwhelmingly to reject the city's current offer. Over the last fifteen years, Gem salaries have lost over twenty percent of their purchasing power due to cost of living adjustments that have been consistently below CPI. While Gem salaries are worth less than ever, the workloads have massively increased. Over the past several years, the number of staff gem positions has shrunk by over thirty percent. This has happened through layoffs and attrition. When the city initiated a massive layoff of gem positions in twenty twenty, we were assured that it was only temporary and that COVID would not be used as an excuse to restructure city staffing. Now, city services brought back the pre-pandemic levels, but staffing levels are not. Gem is being asked to do more with less while making less. This is unsustainable. We are experiencing much higher than normal turnover and quit wait rates as a result. Throughout negotiations, the city negotiation team has canceled meetings, failed to respond to information requests and provided only partial responses to our proposals. Is done all of this while maintaining a hard-line stance that retroactive pay increases are off the table, even as the MOU expired on June thirtieth. This has frustrated our team tremendously and is what led us to file unfair labor practice charges, bad-bargaining employment relations toward. Currently, Gem has been waiting for over a month for the city team to respond to an information request asking for the turnover rate amongst MPA and PLMA staff versus Gem staff.
Got a bit.
Gem placed this because the city team claimed that there was a retention problem amongst MPA and PLMA that didn't exist for Gem. We don't believe that the city has any less of a retention problem for Gem than it does for these other bargaining units. And the city has refused so far to respond to our information requests that could document that. The city has failed to provide any justification for offering certain bargaining units retention pay that provides those employees an additional five hundred and fifty dollars a month in compensation that is not being offered to Gem, especially when these bargaining units already earn salaries that are significantly higher than Gem on average. In addition to asking for fair and equitable treatment, we're also asking for more in-house promotional opportunities. Despite chapter twenty-five of the city code stating that in-house promotions should be considered prior to open recruitment, the overwhelming majority of city recruitments are not promotional but open to the public. This is evidenced by the currently open recruitment for a street maintenance lead worker. This position was not offered as a promotional position before going public despite being a position that is typically filled by promotion from the street maintenance worker or senior street maintenance worker ranks. We have several members interested in this position. Filling this position internally would enable the city to fill it faster, but the city has chosen to fill it externally. This is an example of one of our concerns and a reason for why we have this proposal on the table. Many of our members tell us that the lack of ability to promote is a major source of low morale and overall dissatisfaction with the city working environment. We're simply asking to be treated fairly and equitably for the city to recognize our hard work and sacrifices by providing us what we deserve. What we are asking for will ultimately help build a more sustainable and overall higher morale workforce for years to come. We're asking to be treated with the respect and dignity we deserve. We had a first mediation session last week with the city. You know, we we had some encouraging signs. We know you guys are going to talk in closed session uh, after this meeting about it. And we remain, we have a a second mediation session scheduled here in a couple of weeks later this month. And you know, despite, we have numerous issues that, you know, we went to impasse over. And despite all of those issues, uh, I think if uh, we're able to get something on the table uh, through mediation that is more approximate to what was offered to these other bargaining units that wasn't offered to us and we're able to get retro pay back to July one, uh, I think we would have a path to a deal. So you know, we seriously hope that you consider increasing the authority that the team has uh, as we head towards this mediation session. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, my name is Laura Pratt. And as many of you know, I've talked to you many years ago regarding the reduced staffing levels throughout the city. I told you, I gotta say, about five years ago that it wasn't sustainable, that we were hurting, that we're all doing way too much more with a lot less people. Uh, when I started, we had about three hundred people in Gem. We're down to less than two hundred people now. Uh, I'm sorry, we went from about three hundred and fifty people down to less than two hundred. And the duties haven't gone anywhere. And as Ryan talked about, uh, and as I've talked to you about this before, we've had it, you know? I mean, to quote Peter Finch in the network, we're mad as hell and we can't take it anymore. We've had enough of this, you know? Um, year after year, the city passes its budget. Uh, all of a sudden having a windfall because positions are on the books, but they haven't been filled. And who do you think's doing all that work? We are. You know, um, a lot of you, you know, I'm sure you're working too, but come out from behind those screens, come down to the divisions, come to the actual places where we work. See what we're doing. See how much we're doing and how little we get for it. We have a senior custodian who's worked for the city over fifteen years. And he's basically paying you to come down here and scrub your toilets and and vacuum your floors because the gas prices are so high. And he's driving almost a hundred miles a day round trip to to come and scrub your toilets. And but you see fit to give, you know, another four percent to your top people who are already making about a quarter of a million bucks. Now you want to tell me how that's fair. You sit here and you say how much you appreciate your staff. Show us. We're tired of it. I've been talking to you about it over five years. Do something about it. Stop making the ones higher at the top even richer. You got us at least ten people in this city, I think it's closer to twenty, that are making more than the governor of California. We've had it. We we are choosing between a roof over our heads and food on the table. You need to stop this. You need to treat us better. You keep talking about it. We've been hearing since before the two thousand and eight recession. Oh, yeah, when we get, when things are better, you'll get yours. Come on. You said you wouldn't use COVID as an excuse, but that's exactly what you did. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Bannon. I've been with the uh, city of Monterey parking for fifteen years. I was hoping to just kind of give you a sense of reality of like my daily world, not trying to complain. Um, living here, I've never had a bill go down. Um, I'm considered a classic employee, though I've never been promoted. Um, I do modest investing out of my paycheck, so I do a hundred and fifty dollars a month to a Roth IRA. And then I do the max deferred comp that the city matches. After I pay medical and dental out of pocket, I only net three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars a month. My mortgage is three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, to make up for the shortfalls, I chase my tail by doing zero interest in balance transfers like every sixteen months. Right now, I got my American Express due, so I owe seventeen thousand, but I'm going to do another balance transfer to get a zero percent interest and get a three percent transaction fee. And I just kind of keep chasing my tail doing this. Um, I followed the city suggestion to get a higher education. And while employed here, I received my bachelor's and master's degree in business. Um, also to supplement income or to help not paying others, I've got my realtor's license, my paralegal, a guard card. And I'm currently working on electronic certificate. Prior to the city, I own my own business and I've always been in a lead role. Strangely though, I have not moved up. Um, I rely on medical and I'm grateful that the city provides that. I had a daughter born deaf and through the gift of cochlear implants, she can hear. She goes to first grade. She's at a level where she's, you know, doing really well. My son, at the age of twenty, blacked out behind the wheel because his heart rhythm wasn't correct and he has a pacemaker. So again, very grateful for having medical. But each year they seem to go up. Um, years passed and would take concessions and then we might get a slight raise, but then the counterbalance would be we pay higher medical out of pocket or the city not contribute as much to our purse. We are not greedy. We have taken on more of a workload, yet we don't see the financial cost of living properly adjusted. We all worked when COVID was rampant, not knowing what this thing was. And we had public that was either mad at us because we wore masks or they were mad at us because we weren't stopping people from not wearing masks. It was very confusing. Um, I just feel that we've been nothing but a bright star with all this darkness and we deliver excellent service. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Is it still on?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it is.
Uh, hello, my name is Shay Ballisteri. Uh, I'm the chairman for the general employees of the city of Monterey. Um, as you may know, Gem declared impasse in negotiations with the city. And I'd like to inform you exactly how we got to this place. From the very beginning of negotiations, we were told by management, management, there was no possibility of a retroactive contract if we could not get one completed by the previous contract's expiration. It was non-negotiable and not up for discussion. And what ended up happening is management regularly had no responses to our proposals, failed to provide numerous information requests, had meetings with insufficient time or forgot meetings altogether. And this was virtually, this is and was virtually impossible to negotiate a new contract under those conditions before our contract expired. As if by design, management was stalling the negotiation process in an attempt to force Gem members to either take a poor cola increase or go without any cost of living increase at all. The city, the city literally has more incentive to not give a contract to Gem than to give us one at all. Once the majority of the other bargaining units signed their contracts that included a retroactive clause, the city decided it was finally time to negotiate with Gem. By that time, we had already filed the perp charge for failure to negotiate in good faith and had declared impasse. Additionally, at that time, we still hadn't been offered the same cola as the other bargaining units. At impasse, the finally, the city finally offered Gem employees the same four and four, four percent as the other bargaining units as part of their final settlement offer. Why haven't we just taken this offer? Because it's not remotely the same offer as some of the other groups. I'll explain. Other bargaining units were given a monthly retention pay on top of their negotiated cola of up to five hundred and fifty months. This is not being offered to Gem members. Management claims that as retention issues with other units in the city, yet refuses to provide yet another information request to show Gem's retention rate in comparison to the others. When we asked why the other bargaining, when we asked the other bargaining units how they got their data for this retention claim, we were informed it was originally floated in their negotiation as two new additional pay step increases, but management decided to call it retention pay as to avoid having it, having to offer it to other bargaining units such as ours. The council needs to know, we believe, management has attempted in bad faith to hold Gem's contract hostage in order to give us a lesser contract compared to other bargaining units. Continues to do so with retention pay language, they refuse to validate with yet another ignored information request. Despite our efforts, we have not been able to fairly negotiate. Gem members, the lowest paid employees of the city, cannot financially afford to agree to such a contract just as much as we can't afford to not have one at all. We ask the council to help us. We're at a loss.
And thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff members.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Undine Lauer. Most of you know me and I'm a proud and grateful member of the city of Monterey and a member of Gem and the vice um, vice chair of the bargain unit. Um, I would like to just share um, a personal story to help provide some context. As you know, in two thousand and twenty, um, most of the city departments, when we thought COVID was just going to be a couple of weeks, uh, most of the city departments and employees sheltered in place along with our community. However, there were employees that were unable to shelter in place due to the nature, the nature of their duties. Um, some of these employees were our custodians who also happened to be some of the lowest paid members of Gem. At the time, as a building maintenance employee, supporting our custodial and other maintenance staff, I wasn't able to shelter in place. My husband, who is also an essential worker, um, was not able to shelter at all either. And so our fifteen-year-old daughter was left home alone most days. Um, Rio, who grew up with Alexa, Mayor Clyde, you know her, um, was having a very rough time emotionally. Sorry, um.
Yeah, that's okay.
She felt very isolated and there were days when I had to choose between coming to work and leaving her home and not being sure how she was going to do that day. And my story is not unique. There are so many of your Gem employees who had to make those same choices every day. Um, there were days when I was worried about exposing my family to COVID um, by coming to work, especially on those days when there was a notice on my chair that I had been exposed by a coworker. Um, I remember being so worried for my coworkers who caught COVID. Um, I I remember being worried a lot of those days, but still I for my coworkers who caught COVID. Um, I I remember being worried a lot of those days, but still I showed up. Um, we showed up. We we showed up. You showed up. We we showed up. And we're grateful to have jobs. But it's very difficult to keep up and make ends meet right now. And we're not asking for the moon. Our request is in line with your stated mission to retain good employees. And your serious consideration of our request would demonstrate that our sacrifice and our efforts are appreciated. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Undine.
Dear city council members, Mayor Pat Benza, resident of Monterey. Giving four percent across the board for employees sounds fair, but it isn't. The one hundred and eighty plus employees of the general employees of Monterey are your employees who are most affected by the high inflation we are currently seeing. Most are renters who are seeing their rent skyrocket. Few own homes with fixed rate home loans like your um, higher paid employees. Most have to commute into Monterey because even as renters, they can't afford rent within Monterey, which is now two thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars per month on average. Therefore, they are now paying the higher price for gas. I had hoped that the city would work negotiations different for a change, that it would be working from the lowest paid employees first instead of from the top down. These are the people who as residents, we see our streets, in our parks, our office staff, our sports centers employees. Their jobs shouldn't be treated with any less importance than other higher paid employees. I hope that the city council will ask the HR negotiating team to realize the added needs of these employees and treat those negotiations with the respect and consideration that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
I believe that concludes public comment on items on close session here in chambers, Mayor.
Okay, we we very much appreciate the folks taking the time to share their thoughts with us. Anyone online wanted to share as well?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay, but you wanted to say something, Nat?
No, I was I was talking, um, you caught it, the outside online saying, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, very good. With that, we will adjourn to closed session. As always, thank you, public. Thank you, staff members. Thank you, council for making it always informative, interesting and challenging. We'll see you shortly. We're adjourned in close, just closed session.